Prayer and Pledge of Legions. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us, and lead us not into temptation, but to the earth for good. For thine is the kingdom, and the power, and the glory forever and ever. Pledge of Legions to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, item C on the agenda is approval of minutes from June 21st, 2021, from the regular council meeting. In the absence of any objections or corrections, the minutes shall stand approved. Hearing none, they stand approved. Hey, moving on, item D, citizen communication. If there's anyone in the audience, either here or on WebX. On WebX, if you put in the chat, if you have any questions or concerns, we will address those throughout the meeting. Item E, reports from council committees. E1 Finance and Budget Committee met on June 28th, 2021, and recommending council approve the second quarter budget adjustments. E2 Safety and Human Resources Committee did not meet on June 28th due to lack of agenda items, and nor did the Technology and Communications Committee did not meet tonight due to lack of agenda items. Moving on to item G, introduction of new ordinances and resolutions. G1 is ordinance number 020-21, and ordinance approving current June 21st, June 2021 replacement pages to the City of Napoleon codified ordinances. Have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Council President. Uh, this is the, these are the semi-annual replacement pages for the codified ordinances. Uh, these address council ordinances as well as changes in state laws. Uh, but some of the changes in here, uh, from the city side are just the general fund and capital split, uh, replacement of containers, and water rates and sewer rates. Uh, on the state side, it was electric bicycles and scooters or low-speed micro-mobility devices, and, uh, personal delivery devices, which I, I read that to be, um, you know, robots that deliver packages, uh, or deliver personal property to somebody's address. So, uh, we now have, have code that addresses that. Um, those were the, the only real major changes that I saw.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Rocks, please call the roll.
Jeff?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Okay, that will be moving on to second read. Uh, item G2 is resolution number 021-21. A resolution authorizing the expenditure of funds in excess of $25,000 for the project known as 2021 Street Striping Project, which was not included in the 2021 master bid list, resolution number 062-20, and authorizing competitive bidding in regard thereto, and declaring an emergency, and suspension is requested. Do you have a motion?
Motion.
Second. Okay, thank you. Joel?
Uh, thank you, Council President. This is a item that's budgeted once every other year, and covers the restriping of the streets and crosswalks and a bunch of other areas for us, including parking lots. Um, this year, we're excluding, obviously, the pool parking lot, uh, and then roads that we are in the process of rebuilding and resurfacing. So, American Road, Lynn, uh, and a few others. Oakwood. So. That's it. We have 110,000 budgeted, and we also have an additional 10,000 for some of the, some changes and fixes and things, so. Yeah. So, a total of 120,000 budgeted for striping-related expenses. That would go out to bid, uh, if council approves under suspension.
I'm gonna test someone's memory here. I feel like somebody had mentioned something, I think, in the last year or so. It was a, hey, next time we do the striping, um, there's an issue, and I'm, I'm gonna blame Jeff. I think it was, uh, like, maybe you had noticed something, or somebody else did, but I don't remember what that was, and you may have already addressed it.
We didn't. Was it downtown wildcat painting? The rails around the paw prints?
Okay, that could've been.
No, that was mentioned when we were painting.
Yeah.
That day.
Yeah, not sure if that was it, or if it was something else, but I'm sure if somebody did bring something up.
Wasn't there a crosswalk on Glenwood or something that was?
We fixed that last time.
It was all fixed.
Yeah.
That's the only thing there.
Yeah. There was, there was one, there was one on one side of Glenwood, crossing Glenwood. It was kind of worth that one on the north side, not the south side. I think now there's a one on both sides, I think.
Right.
Yeah, we took care of that last time.
All right. All right. Okay, any other questions or comments?
And when I say we, I mean Chad took care of it.
Right?
Let's be honest.
And, um, Joel, there's a suspension requested. What's the reason on that?
Uh, so we can get it out to bid and get it done this year, without hitting into a bad weather month.
All right.
Motion for suspension.
Second.
Hey, Rocks, please call the roll on suspension.
Jeff?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Okay, and Rocks, please call the roll on the resolution.
Joe?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Okay, that has passed on first read under suspension. Moving on to item G3, ordinance number 022-21, and ordinance supplementing the annual appropriation measure, supplement number four, for the year 2021, and declaring an emergency. And suspension's requested on this one as well. You have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Kelly?
Thank you. Um, the first part is for the general fund. Um, the first one is, we never received the 2020 invoice for the radio, um, tower that the fire department puts equipment on. And then the next one, it was inadvertently not budgeted for the postage, um, for the $2,600. The next one on the list is undefined contingencies. This is to replace it back up to the $25,000 level. There's about $1,900 left. Um, a lot of it was from donations and grants, so we don't know what we're getting, so we have to use it to, um, move it. There were two big items, though. Um, the commissioner sent over to the court after the budget was passed just recently, within the last month or so, that they were gonna resurface the parking lot, which they do every other year, so that wasn't in the budget, it was about over $11,000. And then if you remember during the budget, we switched how the garage was being billed to, you know, the major funds and general funds to evenly distribute what everyone was using. So if it's over $3,000, they have to call, um, Joel and myself, and then we have them take it out of their fund. So this was to replace the fire department for their, um, purchase. The next one is for other equipment for the, there was a donation from the VFW Post for the water rescue equipment for $1,000. So the total for the general fund is $30,979. Is there any questions on the general fund piece? The next one is the recreation fund. Um, the first one is to replace $3,500 for the water and sewer under utilities. We had to transfer appropriation so that we could get the emergency pump to be able to open the pool, and this is just putting it back so that they can use it. And then the next one is for the concession projects, products, $5,000. It's higher than expected, which is great, and then everybody will come back on the other side. So we just need appropriation to spend. So the total for the recreation fund is $8,500. Is there any questions on that one?
Nope.
The next one is the capital improvement funds. There's two for Chief O'Brien. Um, the first one, he received a Walmart grant for the temperature probe in the training facility for $3,000. And then there's an ODNR grant for $10,000. The total cost of the project is $20,775.20. During the 2021 budget, there was $12,000 budgeted. There's also a $1,500 Walmart grant, so the appropriation that we need is $7,275.20. This city will end up spending $9,275.20 for that $20,000 project, so that's great. Um, so the total for the capital fund is $10,275.20. Is there any questions on the capital fund? And then, the next two go hand in hand. When we were doing the budget, um, I don't know if council remembers, we said, we didn't know if we were gonna change the notes to bonds, but the interest rate was great, so we did, ended up doing it. We had estimates from the bond council and financial advisor, and so it was lower than what the actual was. So this is just appropriating money from the 510 fund to pay into the 519 fund, because that's how we pay, and then just appropriating that money in the 519 fund to pay the principal payment. So the total for the supplemental number four is $117,960.77. Is there any questions?
And you are requesting suspension?
Yes, please.
Is there a reason for that?
So we can close the month.
Thank you.
Motion for suspension. Second.
Hey, Rocks, please call the roll on suspension.
Jeff?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Okay, any other questions or comments on the ordinance? Rocks, please call the roll.
Jeff?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Okay, that has passed on first read under suspension. Item G4, ordinance number 023-21, and ordinance authorizing the finance director to make appropriation transfers, transfer of appropriation from one appropriation line item to another appropriation line item pursuant to ORC Section 5705.40 for the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2021, as listed in Exhibit A, and declaring an emergency. You have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
All right, Kelly?
Thank you. This is for the new contract employee in the engineering department. Um, we're taking the money from the salary and benefits and putting it in the professional service line so that he can pay the employee for the rest of the year. If the employee becomes an employee for the city at some point, then it would just be paid out of the normal salary and benefits. But if he continues to be a contract employee, then next year it would be budgeted under the professional services instead of in the salaries.
And suspension's requested?
Yes, please.
What's the reason on that one?
The same reason. These are all three.
Just to get them closed for this year or this month?
Yes.
Okay. You have a motion for suspension.
So moved.
Second.
Hey, Rocks, please call the roll on suspension.
Jeff?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Any questions or comments? Rocks, please call the roll on the ordinance.
Jeff?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Okay, that has passed on first read under suspension. Moving on to item G5, resolution number 024-21. The resolution authorizing the finance director to transfer certain fund balances, transfer number four, from respective funds to other funds per ORC Section 5705.14 on an as-needs basis in fiscal year 2021, listed in Exhibit A, and declaring an emergency. You have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Okay, Kelly?
Thank you. This is just the second piece of the supplemental. It's actually transferring the funds from the 510 fund to the 519 fund to pay the bond payment.
Okay, and you're requesting suspension so we can get it closed this month?
Correct, thank you.
Motion for suspension. Second.
Rocks, please call the roll on suspension.
Jeff?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Okay, any questions or comments? Hey, Rocks, please call the roll on the resolution.
Jeff?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Okay, that has passed on first read under suspension. Okay, item H, we have no second reads.
Notice how I cleared that up, right?
Yeah, thank you.
Almost cleared up the next one, too. Not quite.
Thanks, I appreciate that. You're my favorite proton. Moving on to item I, third readings of ordinances and resolutions. I1 is resolution number 019-21. A resolution adopting the 2021 tax budget for the City of Napoleon, Ohio, as required in Sections 5705.28 and 5705.281 of the Ohio Revised Code, and directing the finance director to file the same with the county auditor, and declaring an emergency. You have a motion?
2022, I'll make the motion.
Thank you.
Second.
Kelly?
Thank you, I have nothing new to add.
Any other corrections? Thank you, so you say 21. Any questions or comments on this one? Hey, Rocks, please call the roll on the resolution.
Jeff?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Moving on to item J, Good of the City. J1, discussion or action acceptance of the Drug Use Prevention Program Grant for the DARE program. Joel?
Thank you. Um, you know, ever since we took the DARE program back over from the sheriff's office for Napoleonic schools, we've been seeking grants and donations and things for the DARE program, so this has been a, a good way for us to fund something that was kind of, um, put in our lap. So we're grateful for that. Nothing further to add.
Okay. You need anything else on that? Some other information? Any questions, comments?
Where's this money coming from, Joel?
It's a grant program, um...
It's going to be returned to Joe's office?
Yeah, I believe this one is... Greg, do you know? It is, they... Yeah, this one's returned to Joe's, yeah. Uh, we, we've been getting donations, too, from the Adams Board.
Okay, you could have a motion to accept.
Motion.
I'll second.
Okay, Rocks, please call the roll.
Jeff?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Okay, that has been accepted. Item J2, discussion or action, accept the donation of hand sanitizer from Kurt's Ace Hardware, $125 value. Joel, what can you tell us about that?
Nothing different than what's...
We're gonna have clean hands?
Yeah.
All right, thank you, Kurt's Hardware. Okay, I have a motion to accept.
So move.
Second.
Hey, Rocks, please call the roll.
Jeff?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
All right. Item J3, discussion or action, certify and file annual special assessment with the county auditor for placement and collection on the 2021 tax duplicate, duplicates payables in the year 2022. Direct the law director to draft legislation. You need to discuss anything else on that, and wait till it comes back. We have a motion to direct the law director to draft legislation.
So moved.
Second.
Hey, Rocks, please call the roll.
Jeff?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Hey, item J4, discussion or action, accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the budget commission, and authorizing the necessary tax levies, and certifying them to the county auditor for the 2021 tax duplicates payable in year 2022. And we just need to direct the law director to draft legislation.
Motion. Second.
Okay, Rocks, please call the roll.
Jeff?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Billy, you had me sign your time off slip before I knew we had all this work for you.
Perfect.
Pretty smart. All right, we'll go around the table here, and, uh, like the mayor had mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, this is the first time we had the, the whole table. So it makes it easier for me, because before I was, like, writing everybody's name and that, make sure I didn't miss people, so, um, now I just hope I remember everybody's name. Start with Kelly.
Thank you, I just want to thank all you guys. I've enjoyed working here, and so I'm preparing documents so the next person will have guidance.
Great, thank you very much, appreciate that. And Ross?
Kelly, thank you. Appreciate your service here. Um, want to commend the city for all the Fourth of July activities this past weekend. The fireworks show was amazing. Definitely want to give a kudos to the police department. I think I saw them make seven or eight trips up and down. Um, just being sure everyone was good, so appreciate all that you guys did. That's all I had.
Ken?
Thank you, Kelly. And kudos to the police department also for the assistance with the triathlon also.
Thank you, Ken. Dan?
Also, um, thanks, Kelly, for your service here for the last couple of years, and we wish you the best of luck, uh, in Rosford. So, thank you. And that's all I have tonight.
All right, thank you. And I'll say the same thing, thank you, Kelly, for your service, and, uh, wish you the best of luck. And, uh, same thing with the, the police, fire department, and a lot of the city workers. Uh, I, I enjoyed a, a long four-day weekend, and either taking walks and going by parks and stuff, and saw the number of city employees that, um, didn't have a four-day weekend. I mean, I thought about them a lot, that, wow, you know, where so many people are celebrating Fourth of July, and, uh, they're working hard in the heat, and, um, all the way from police, fire, um, ops, a lot of places, and, and even the, you know, the, um, people working at the pool. Um, you know, they had time away from their families, so thank you to everyone. And that's all I have. Mayor?
Saw in today's paper, Don Stangy, former mayor for Napoleon, passed away. Do we want to do some flowers at the funeral home? I think we should. All right, everybody?
Sure.
Somebody asked about the placement of concrete on the outside of the pool, so that when families watch their kids swim in the morning, if there's a wave with concrete there. It'd be really neat if we could get some benches that face the pool, and then you can just flip the, flip the top, and then you can watch and watch kids on the playground. I don't know if that's possible or not, but I think they exist somehow, how they exist and where, I don't know, but, um...
A lot of them have benches that don't have backs.
There's a, even better idea.
Yeah.
You just flip yourself.
Yeah.
We used to have them there, they, they were older benches. We took them out when they, everything was...
Yeah, it'd be nice to have some, I know we just planted grass there, but if we just, it'd be nice for people that are watching their kids swim.
There are a lot of adjustments, too, we'll, we'll be making.
Yeah, I understand, that'd be...
That's one of them.
That's probably one of them, okay, yep. Um, I agree...
I'm glad you brought that up, though.
I agree with everybody said about, uh, the fireworks. I, I'll take our, I'll take our show and put it up against anybody else in the area. I think they would do a great job year in and year out. And like everybody else said, you know, we had a lot of people working this weekend. Uh, Parks and Rec Department, that's their weekend to shine. They did one heck of a job, and all the safety services that were involved that day. That was really, really nice to, everybody working together. Um, last, back up. Um, since Chief Mack has been chief, he's been big on, um, citizen interaction and positive interaction for why would you cough with a cop? And I assume that as COVID fades, that'll start, start back up. with a cop? And I assume that as COVID fades, that'll start back up. But last Thursday, I was driving down Scott Street and I saw a sign for lemonade stand. I stopped real quick. And the adult said that police had stopped there two or three times and gotten a cup. So that's just again, positive interaction in the community. So thank you for doing that, Officer Smith, and then the people that do that. So I agree with what Council President Baraluki said about it's nice having all the, having all the seats filled tonight. It's nice. That's really, really good. Congratulations. The stinks. So our loss is Rosford's gain. Thank you for everything you did for us, Kelly. Really appreciate it. So appreciate it. And that's all I had today. Oh, executive session for matters, personnel matters. Which ones have to be the?
Funny you should ask. To consider the appointment, employment dismissal, discipline, promotion of a public employee, one of those?
The employment of, yeah.
Okay, yeah. That'll work.
Okay. Thank you.
I just want to thank you, Kelly. I agree with him. The only one that would voice it, it does stink. But I know that you'll work hard to make sure we're in as good a position as we can be when you leave. And I wish you the best of luck. I want to thank the entire city for the help with the triathlon. It was, you know, under new management this year. So it was a lot tricky. And so we were saved many times by different city departments that knew what was going on better than what my fellow Rotarians.
Yep, absolutely.
And the pool worked out really well, I think, for the competition part of it. So I could list each department, really. But you probably don't want me to. But and the fire department, too, didn't get mentioned. But the flag is just really a cool addition.
It's a nice touch, really.
It's very nice. And just the fireworks was awesome, just to see them again. And the grand finale was pretty incredible. I enjoyed it, my family and my entire neighborhood. So thank you. That's all for me.
Hey, Jeff?
Well, Kelly, you did a good job here. I appreciate it. This last budget year was something pretty amazing for us. It went from gigantic books to little ones, which is what we need. Appreciate it. Hope you have good adventures down to Rosford. And everybody tells me the fireworks were good here. I was in Paulding, but I've been requested to try to get some private funds from organizations to increase our fireworks for next year. I said somebody needs to put a committee together and go out and do that. I said, I know the veterans organizations would donate, the fraternal organizations would donate, so.
As a supplement to, not replacement.
No, add to our budget. I remember when I was governor at the Moose many, many years ago, we did that. We went around to the different organizations. And we kicked in, I think, fifteen hundred dollars that year, just, just the Moose did. So hopefully we can, I don't know what committee we want to assign that to, or even if we want to assign it or just want to go out and get donations. But everybody says Napoleon can do a bigger bang if they had more money.
Okay.
And that's it.
Do you know how, how many years we've been spending the same amount of money? You have.
As far as I know.
It's been the same, yeah.
As far as I know, since I've been here, we upped it one time from twenty to twenty-five thousand. So.
Which is obviously, everything else is going up.
Sure.
If we keep the same amount of money, we're gonna have a lot less bang. So I think that's a great idea. I know I've talked to Tony about it a little bit over the years when I was on Parks and Rec Board. Just saying, I'm sure there are some, some businesses in town that would like to have their name attached to it and spend a little bit of extra money. So we'll have to figure something out, get a committee together.
Now's, now's the time to plan for next year.
Right.
You could do an ad hoc just for that, or you can do it in the Parks and Rec since that's who runs it. So. I don't know if you wanted to sign it or maybe even.
I think maybe we could sign it to the Parks and Rec. Now let, have them come up with some ideas and maybe start with Parks and Rec Board and let them kind of discuss what they would like and have that go to the Parks and Rec Committee. Anything else, Jeff?
No, thank you.
All right, Molly?
Kelly, thank you. You made my first budget meetings painless, I guess. But no, from the stories I heard, it was very easy to follow along. The packets were great. And I appreciate all your knowledge and all the explanations and extra emails. So good luck to you.
Thank you.
You'll be missed. So now I'll just piggyback on what everyone else said. Nice job with the whole Fourth of July celebration. And Monday morning, I was out for a run early. And don't you know it, the guys were out there picking up all the trash already at like six AM from the night before. So and I know that's time away from their families. And so we can enjoy our Fourth of July holiday. So thank you. That's it.
All right, thank you. Billy?
Nothing from me, thank you.
Okay. Joel?
I got a request for council to direct law director to draft legislation for the OPWC grants for next year from ODOT or from, well, it's from OPWC, yeah. That didn't, we didn't get that on this agenda, but we're requesting it. That council approved that to direct them to draft legislation for the next council meeting so we can get three reads before the applications are due.
All right.
When are the applications due?
September. We don't have any project specific, but we're looking at a few. It can usually typically we do water and sewer. Typically, it's sewer projects because it's highly competitive and we score better. One of the thoughts we kind of kicked around was Mikkelsen, maybe Orwig and Maine for the water line. But, you know, Mikkelsen needs it. And it's a worthy project and it'll, it'll score well.
What day in September are they due?
It's usually the first Friday, excuse me, the Friday after, wait a minute.
Someone like to make a motion?
So you could get three reads in there.
I was hoping to bring it now so we could get the three reads and have an emergency clause, but then we could get the three reads so you didn't have to suspend.
This is just asking for.
I understand.
Legislation.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Any other questions, comments? Okay, Rox, please call the roll.
Jeff?
Yes.
Molly? Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
All right. Okay, they have a motion. Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I had a couple other items. The website review, we were gonna bring that to full counsel. Since we've got it up and running, we've been, obviously, we've been making some tweaks to it, to, and adjustments. So I think we're ready now to bring it in the next council meeting. If we want to do that at the beginning of the meeting or whenever you want to, we can do it during the good of the city, however you want to put it on the agenda.
I recommend let's do it under the good of the city.
Okay.
I guess, that's funny, I was gonna say the opposite, just because if Dustin and Justin have to come in, and you know, if they worked all day in there. But we can ask them, doesn't matter. That's the only reason I would move it up. We can put it the good of the city and then we can talk to them, see if it matters. If we can, need to move it up, we can move it up.
Okay. We've had some peak alerts. We've got another one tomorrow. And it's been pretty, pretty warm. So usage should be up. Last week, we actually did hit one of our peaks, one of the peaks, the one CP of last year was exceeded last week. So we're, we're up. And but it's good, the good news is we're hitting the peaks with our peaking generators. And but, you know, we're just getting into, just ramping up the real hot season. So we've got about two months to go.
Hey Joel, speaking of the electric things, I guess, I know while we were, we were gone, there was quite a few storms and wind. And I don't think we say it enough how fortunate we are with our electric department here and the tree trimming and all the work that they do to make sure that our, our lights stay on. It's, it's, it's very noticeable when you hear all of the other power outages around Napoleon. And in Napoleon, there's just very minimal. And if there are, they, they're back on quick.
Yeah. Yeah, that's true. And it's, it's, it's pretty remarkable.
We, we measure our outages in minutes. That's.
Yeah.
When they, when they happen, they're measured in minutes, not hours, you know what I mean, not days. It's minutes. So.
Yeah, when we talk to other communities, like when we were, we were in Orlando, I mean, other, other communities just don't have what we have. They just don't.
You guys are out there sweating the day, jumping down stuff today on a hot day like this. So that when that storm comes through, they're out there in the middle of thunder lightning storm cleaning up stuff.
That's right. I do have, I wasn't, I wasn't gonna pass, I wasn't gonna pass this around to you. This is the new embroidered logo for the golf club. We've got some sample here. So we're gonna look at getting some shirts, hats and things and golf balls with the new logo on it for some things at the clubhouse. Give it a try. So.
All right.
And Kelly, obviously, thanks for everything. So I'll just say it now as if I hadn't said it already to you. So just keep my, keep my friends, Mayor McKinnon and Councilman Rusen lying, if you would, and tell them I said hi. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Joel. All right, could have a motion to go into executive session to consider the appointment of personnel. Is that enough, Billy?
Did he say employment?
It's employment, not appointment.
Okay.
Motion.
Second.
Hey Rox, please call the roll.
Jeff?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
All right.
You have other ones already.
Thanks.
Thanks, Roxanne.
Yeah. Could I have a motion to go into executive session for economic development?
Can we make that a little more specific?
And matters to remain confidential due to competitive nature of utility.
That's a third executive session, I believe. But the economic development one, if we could start to do this regularly, that would be appreciated just because it's, it's, when you say economic development, it's not specific enough for the statute. So we need to talk about whether we're going to just consider confidential information related to marketing plans, specific business strategy, trade secrets. There are others that I'm skipping over here. That one? That one? You like that one? Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
Is it, is that economic development, option A?
I got some of those words in there before you said that. So I think we're good.
Thank you.
Did you get that?
Okay, good. Could I have a motion for that?
So moved. Second.
Hey Rox, please call the roll.
Jeff?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Okay, could I have a motion to go into executive session for matters to remain confidential due to competitive nature of utility?
So moved.
Second.
All right, Rox, please call the roll.
Jeff?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Okay. Could I have a motion to come out of executive session for economic development?
So moved.
Second.
Rox, please call the roll.
Jeff?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Lori?
They could have a motion come out of executive session for, pardon me? You should. No action taken. Sorry, thank you. Motion to come out of executive session for matters to remain confidential due to competitive nature of utility.
So moved.
Second.
Hey Rox, please call the roll.
Jeff?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
No action taken. And could have a motion come out of the executive sessions and consider employment of personnel.
So moved.
Second.